The number you have dialed has not been recognized. Please try again.
Hold on.
Let's hang up on him. Okay, we're trying to get a counselor on the phone apparently who'd let us know. So I'm gonna start the meeting and get us underway. Uh, it's Tuesday, July 5th, City Council Meeting. Thanks for joining us. You all right? We good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right. Hi, welcome. Uh, we'll go ahead and get started by bringing our, uh, starting our meeting with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Starr? Baranco?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Jensen? McCouris?
Here.
Knightsert?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
All right, with us tonight to give our invocation, welcome back Pastor Charlie Moore from Sunny Crest United Methodist. Pastor Charlie, thanks for being here. Please stand for his invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, today we come before you as humble servants, those looking to be you outside of the walls, to help those in need and see those in need. We pray for those who have served and who are serving, and we got to celebrate freedom yesterday. We pray for those communities that have been hit hard by storms in the last four to five hours. We ask that you give us guidance and wisdom, rush us with the Holy Spirit to bring us a peace and a calm as we move forth through this meeting. It's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will give a minute here to see if we can get our counselor on the phone. Uh, thank you Pastor Charlie Moore.
Enter your attendee ID number.
For your invocation tonight. All right, and, uh, and do we have Counselor Starr on the phone?
Yes, we do.
Okay, Counselor Starr is here as well with us then remotely. Move on nine and four, approval of our consent agenda. Uh, any changes to be made there? If not, I'll take a motion.
Move approval. Knightsert?
Second.
All right, motion by Knightsert, seconded by Selberg. Uh, any discussion on that? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll then move ahead to item thirty-two, that's our regular agenda to approve. I take a motion there, please.
So moved. Knightsert?
Second, Cole.
All right, motion to approve by Knightsert, seconded by Cole. Any discussion there? Counselor Knightsert?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend by moving Agenda Item fifty immediately after Agenda Item forty-six.
Second, Cole.
Second for that by Cole. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that change, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes six to zero. Back to the main motion now as amended. Any other discussion or changes there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Uh, before we move on, just a reminder, public input for tonight for all of our agenda items is three minutes unless it's for final adoption, in which case, uh, public input will be five minutes. And, uh, at general public input at the end of the meeting, we'll have three minutes per person on any topic that we didn't cover earlier. So with that being said, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Item thirty-three is a new twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license and new twenty-twenty-two retail wine license for Mertens and Stodaro LLC, Rock City, three oh-nine South Bonson Avenue with conditional use permit sixteen-four-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two being approved on June first, twenty-twenty-two, pending final inspections per building services. Item thirty-four is a new twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license and new twenty-twenty-two retail wine license for Holiday Station Stores LLC, Circle K, thirteen oh-one East Sixty-ninth Street, pending final inspections per building services. Item thirty-five is a request to add video lottery terminals with the new twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license for Holiday Station Stores LLC, Circle K, thirteen oh-one East Sixty-ninth Street. Item thirty-six is transfer of twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two retail malt beverage license and twenty-twenty-two retail wine license from Kathmandu Indian Cuisine, fifty-three-ten East Arrowhead Parkway to Kathmandu Indian Cuisine LLC, fifty-three-ten East Arrowhead Parkway. Item thirty-seven is transfer of twenty-twenty-two packaged liquor license and twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three retail malt beverage license, including video lottery terminals, from Davelong Incorporated, four hundred Northwest Avenue to MG Oil Company Corner Pantry, thirty-two, four hundred Northwest Avenue. Item thirty-eight is a special one-day malt beverage license for S- South Dakota Suds to be operated at Frontier Climbing and Fitness, fifty-four-five Grant Street for a festival on June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Item thirty-nine is a special one-day liquor license for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at Avera Behavioral Health Parking Lot for four-four-hundred West Sixty-ninth Street for Hearts and Healing Event on July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Item forty is a special one-day liquor license for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated at the Avera IT Parking Lot, Great Outdoor Store Parking Lot on Second Avenue from East Tenth and East Eleventh and Faywick Park Green Space for River Fest on August twentieth, twenty-twenty-two. Item forty-one is a special one-day liquor license for KJTLLC to be operated at The Social, three oh-one South Thompson Avenue for weddings on August seventh, September third, fourth, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-three, and twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two.
Jamie, good evening.
Good evening, Jamie Palmer with Licensing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on items thirty-three through forty-one.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public here to speak on, uh, any of these items tonight? Counsel, any questions on these?
Move approval?
Second.
McCouris.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by McCouris. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item forty-two is a second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter thirty-seven, taxation, sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening. Sean?
Sean Pritchett, Director of Finance. Uh, before you, second reading for a ordinance, uh, changing the Sioux Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau Business Improvement District to the Experience Sioux Falls Business Improvement District and making a number of updates to that particular ordinance. Uh, we talked about it in great detail at the informational on June seventh, as well as on the first reading on June twenty-first, so I won't reiterate all the details over again for you. Um, there's two things I was going to point out this evening, just for your awareness. First, in May, we did send out letters to all members of the hotel bid explaining all the changes that were being proposed in detail, as well as inviting them to attend or give comment, either at the City Council Meetings or prior to that. We did not receive any comments, uh, at the city, either verbal or written, uh, and neither did Experience Sioux Falls. Um, the second item I was going to note is that we're requesting an amendment this evening to, uh, add Section fifteen, which would make the implementation date or the, uh, for the ordinance to be September first. When we brought this forward, we didn't know the exact date that Experience Sioux Falls was going to be officially switching over and taking over operations. We do know that date now to be September first, and we'd like the ordinance, uh, implementation to coincide with that date. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on this topic. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for Sean here? Okay, I would take a motion to approve this then.
Move approval?
Second, Cole.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole. Uh, any discussion? I think we have an amendment he wants to make. Counselor Selberg, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to amend by inserting in Section fifteen, the effective date of the ordinance shall be September one, twenty-twenty-two.
Second, Cole.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Back to the main motion now as amended. Is there other discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that one's gonna pass seven to zero. Item forty-three, please.
Item forty-three is a second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at ten thirteen South Sherman Avenue from the RD-one Residential Duplex and Twin Home District to the RD-two Townhome Residential Traditional District, number sixteen-three-eighty-three, twenty-twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, John and Nancy Stratman.
Good evening.
Good evening, Kristen Bennett from Planning and Development Services. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as stated, this is a rezoning from the RD-one to the RT-two district, the applicant and owner being John and Nancy Stratman. Project is located at ten thirteen South Sherman Avenue. Lot size is about point one-three acres, and the purpose is to match the correct zoning to the current use of the property as a triplex, as it's been a triplex for some time now.
All right, perfect. Thanks, Kristen. Anyone from the public who'd like to speak to this item? Counsel, you got any questions here? For a motion?
Move approval? Knightsert?
Second, Cole.
Motion by Knightsert, seconded by Cole. Any discussion on the motion to approve here? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item?
Next item is forty-four, second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of West Bitterroot Street and east of South Trevoli Place from the RD-two Townhome Residential Suburban District to the O Office District, number sixteen-three-ninety-six, twenty-twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, Earhart Griffin and Associates, Damian Grebel.
As stated, this is an, the request is a rezoning from the RD-two to the O Office District. App- applicant is Damian Grebel. The owner is Kelly Nielsen. The site is located west of Southwestern Avenue and north of West Eighty-Fifth Street. The lot size is point six-three acres. The point of, purpose of this rezoning is to combine this piece with an existing office parcel to the north and construct a future office building.
All right, thanks, Kristen. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you got any questions here? Move approval?
Second, Cole.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is forty-five, a second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located north of West Benson Road and west of North Northview Avenue from the C-four Commercial Regional District to the I-one Light Industrial District, number sixteen-three-ninety-nine, twenty-twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, JSA Consulting Engineers Land Surveyors Incorporated, Pat Schuebach.
Rezoning is from C-four Commercial to I-one and, uh, Light Industrial. Applicants, Pat Schuebach. The owner is Jan's McLand Investments. Site is located north of West Benson Road and east of I-twenty-nine. Parcel size is three-point-seven-eight acres, and the purpose is to construct a future, uh, contractor shop.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-five? All right, Counsel, you have any questions on this one? Look for a motion?
Move approval?
Second, Cole.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Cole to approve this item. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item forty-six is a second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located south of West Forty-first Street and west of South Ellis Road from the AG Agricultural District to the RA-three Apartment Residential High Density and C-three Commercial Community Districts, number sixteen-four-forty-one, twenty-twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant, CR Lloyd Associates Incorporated, Drew O'Brien.
This rezoning is to go from Ag to the C-three and the RA-three zoning districts. The applicant is Lloyd Companies. Current owner is Ulrich Family Trust. Site is located, uh, on the southwest corner of West Forty-first Street and South Ellis Road. The area is thirty acres in size, and the purpose is to construct a future commercial, office, and multifamily residential development.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-six tonight? Any questions here, Counsel?
Move approval?
Second, Cole.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole on this item. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes seven to zero. Next item?
Item fifty is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Ulrich Edition sixteen-four-forty, twenty-twenty-two. Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicant, CR Lloyd Associates Incorporated, Drew O'Brien. This item was moved by amendment.
This is the preliminary subdivision plan for Ulrich Edition, which is related to the rezoning that was just heard before. The applicant's Lloyd Companies owner is Ulrich Family Trust, located at the southwest corner of West Forty-first Street and South Ellis Road. Site is thirty acres in size, and the purpose will be to construct commercial, office, and multifamily residential development.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone here to speak on item fifty tonight? All right, Counsel, any questions here? Look for a motion?
Move approval? Sale?
Second, Cole.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Cole. Any discussion? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that's gonna pass seven to zero. Next item?
Item forty-seven is a second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at five thousand one East Madison Street from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD-one Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number sixteen-four-thirty-six, twenty-twenty-two, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval six to zero. Private applicants, John Nordley.
This rezoning is to go from the RS to the RD-one Twin Home District. The applicant is Messiah New Hope Lutheran Church, and they are representative, represented by John Nordley. Site is located at five thousand one East Madison Street. Size is approximately, um, two-point-one-five acres. The purpose of this rezone is to construct four twin homes on the east side of the property adjacent to Dubuque Avenue.
All right, perfect. Thanks, Kristen. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, you got any questions on this one?
Move approval?
Second, Cole.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item?
Item forty-eight is a second reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the naming of interior rooms on public property. Sponsor is the mayor.
Diane, hi. Hi, Diane Decoyer, Planning and Development Services. Uh, this item is for naming some interior rooms at Startup Sioux Falls. Uh, the first one is the Market Beat Theater. As you can see from the floor plan, it is located to the north end of the building. The second naming for the interior is the Homegrown Capital Room, and that's about in the center of the building. Is there any questions anybody has?
All right, thanks, Diane. Anyone from the public here to speak on the second reading of this item tonight? Counsel, you got any questions for Diane? Or the folks from Startup Sioux Falls? I see they're here as well. Take a motion?
Move approval? Sale?
Second.
McCouris.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by McCouris to approve item forty-eight. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCouris?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item?
Next item is a first reading in ordinance approving the annual rate increase pursuant to the franchise agreement for ground ambulance service for the city of Sioux Falls with Paramedics Logistics, South Dakota LLC. Recommendation, set a date of hearing for Tuesday, July twelfth, twenty-twenty-two. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Alicia.
Good evening, Alicia Colora, Chief of Clinical Health Services for the, for the Health Department. The agreement between the city of Sioux Falls and Patient Care EMS requires that PCEMS maintain response time performance, clinical performance, system improvements, workforce stability, pricing compliance, and reporting compliance. The city's agreement with PCEMS also stipulates that ambulance service will be provided without subsidy, and that the primary means of compensation will be through fee-for-service reimbursement of patient charges. Each year, those charges are adjusted by either three percent or the increase of the Consumer Price Index for that year, whichever is greater. All rates and charges for services shall be approved by REMSA and the City Council. The Consumer Price Index, urban, for year ending May, twenty-twenty-two, was eight-point-six percent. Therefore, the PCEMS rate increase for your consideration for approval is eight-point-six percent. Earlier this evening, you received the annual performance report from PCEMS. Ambulance service oversight and quality assurance validates that PCEMS has met all contractual requirements. And, um, just on June twenty-second, the REMSA Board also reviewed their contract compliance report, as well as the, um, requested rate increase of eight-point-six percent, and approved those items. So I'll do my best to answer your questions, and we also have the PCEMS team here as well.
Okay, thanks, Alicia. Uh, anyone from the public here to speak on item forty-nine tonight? All right, Counsel, any questions for, uh, Alicia or the PCMS folks tonight on this? Counsel, McCouris?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, another question that we don't have the answer for this evening, but I was wondering what's publicly available in regards to, um, how much is being charged privately versus how much is charged through Medicare and Medicaid, and if we could get a breakdown of that, if that's publicly available?
Yeah, absolutely. I have some rough numbers for you, and then we can get a, a better breakdown for you if you would like, but what I was able to find out is that approximately fifty percent of, um, PCEMS's services are charged to government payers, whether that's state, federal, or other, uh, government payers. The other fifty percent is a mix of, um, private insurance facilities. Remember that they off, also do interfacility transfers, as well as individual users of the system.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I guess my first question then, kind of as a follow-up to that, is how much is the annual billing? How much revenue is generated by this contract?
Yeah, that's something that, um, the Health Department is not privy to, so I wouldn't be able to specifically answer, um, how much revenue is generated. I think as, um, I, I think as part of their business, um, they would have the knowledge of that.
Follow-up, Counselor Starr?
Um, yeah, is, I didn't, uh, hear. I apologize for not being in the room. Is Chief McRavy in, uh, available for questions?
Yeah, Chief McRavy. You bet.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Uh, thank you. I am curious now that the city of Sioux Falls Fire Department is now transporting patients. What kind of numbers did we see over the last year that the combination of when you were first on the scene and how many transports did the fire department make this last year?
We've been tracking, right at about twenty-five transports a year since we started our mutual aid agreement with REMSAA. We don't go by a protocol. For first-on-scene, we transport. It is up to PCMS to transport that patient unless they don't have units available.
Okay, how much- how do we go about the billing process? Do we have a billing service the city uses, or how do we code that for Medicare and Medicaid and get reimbursed for those transports?
We bill PCMS direct through a sub-agreement to the contract, so we bill directly to them, and then they bill through the public.
So I'm thinking about thirty, forty thousand dollars?
I don't have that number on me. I could get it for you, though.
Please. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions tonight? All right, hearing none. Look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, July twelve, on this item?
I so move, Sale.
Second call.
Motion by Sale, seconded by Cole. Any discussion then on that motion? All right, hearing none, we will take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, move to our next item, please. Sorry, that's going to pass seven to zero. Next item?
Item fifty-one is a resolution approving a revised joint cooperative agreement establishing the Southeastern Council of Governments. Sponsor is the mayor.
Kevin, good evening.
Good evening, Kevin Smith with Planning and Development Services. Just a bit of background here, Southeastern Council of Governments provides a variety of planning, economic development, housing, and other services to a six-county region. There's representation by the counties, as well as the first-class communities within the CCOG region. Recently, with the twenty twenty census, the city of T now deserves a seat on the executive board, so what you have in front of you tonight is the addition of the city of T, along with the reduction of one position from the private representation on CCOG's board. So my understanding is it's already a board of twenty-one individuals. Lynn wants to keep that number the same, so add one, take one off. The last time this occurred similarly was when the city of Harrisburg reached the magic number to become a Class One community. So with that, also in the audience tonight is Sophie Johnson with the Southeastern Council of Governments. She can answer any of the hard questions you might have about CCOG.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Anyone from the public here to speak on item fifty-one? Counsel, you got any questions on this item tonight?
Move approval?
Second call.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Cole to approve fifty-one. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item fifty-two is a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen board sponsors, the mayor, for the Events Center Complex Advisory Board. Angela Baki, Ken Bashore, Michael Hart, Shalish Patel. For Library Board of Trustees, Lori Hogstedt, Joel Rosenthal.
Any of those folks here tonight by chance? All right, not seeing them. Anyone want to speak on this item in the public here? All right, I need a motion to approve this item, please.
Move?
Move we approve this item?
Second. Nitzert?
All right, motion by Baranco, seconded by Nitzert. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Baranco?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
McCorris?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Any new business counsel tonight? All right, seeing none, move to public input. Reminder, three minutes per person, and on items we didn't talk about earlier tonight on the- in the meeting, so. Public input coming up. Good evening.
Good evening, Robert Colby. Most of you do not and probably are not aware of this particular publication put out by the city. It's called An Economic-Social Survey of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, nineteen thirty-eight, thirty-nine. Interesting, it would be nice if we had a book similar to this where everything was in one place instead of all over the internet. There are some gems in there that you should be aware of, and I would advise each one of you to take and peruse it. This is reflective of thirty-eight, thirty-nine. There are a hundred and thirty-one Negroes in Sioux Falls, one hundred adults and thirty-one children. Only eight are on relief, four males and four females. Most Negroes find employment in garages and hotels. There are two male and fourteen female Negroes in the beauty parlors. Several have their own business. Best known are the Harvey Mitchells, who for twenty-eight years had a beauty parlor in the Shriver Johnsons. They have their own beauty parlor and culture and school now. The Booker T. Washington Center, located at seven eighteen South Second Street, is deserving of much credit for its fine work in providing good rooms, food, recreations for the poorer local Negroes, as well as transients. For some years, Sioux Falls had a colored policeman, Redden, who, for many years, kept undesirable colored people out of Sioux Falls. There are two Negro Baptist churches under the leadership of Reverend William Smith. They have seventy-nine members. There are some hundred and twenty-five Syrians in Sioux Falls, divided between the Christians and the Mohammedans.